No, thank you.
John? Sure. Anybody else?
Call to order, the June 17th, 2025, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Jean, could you take role, please?
Yeah, Kate Kelly?
Here.
Sean Kepala?
Here.
John Silas?
Here.
Ethan Goldberg?
I'm here.
Peter Boynton?
Aye.
Chris Cosores?
Here.
Chris is participating with Moplin.
Okay, wonderful. New public hearing, Route 125, Route 133 intersection, Osgood Street, Great Pond Road, town in North Andover. Application for watershed special permit under Article 4, Part 5, Article 10, 195, 10.7, the town in North Andover zoning by law. Applicant proposes geometric modifications to the intersection of Osgood Street and Great Pond Road. Installation of ADA, AAV compliant pedestrian crossings at the signalized intersection with accessible signals. Countdown signal heads and crosswalks at all four intersection lengths. Also installation of new sidewalks and crosswalks, utility system adjustments, drainage system modifications, and other improvements. Properties located in the Watershed Protection District, Residential 1, Business 2, Industrial 2, and General Business zoning districts. Jean, want to give us an introduction?
Yep, so as you know, an application for a waiver was submitted to this board. The waiver was denied, so now an application for watershed special permit has been submitted. A notice of intent has been filed with the Conservation Commission as well. The stormwater peer review has commenced, and the first letter from our consultant is included in your packet. It has not been responded to yet, but I anticipate that likely will be started to in the near future and could possibly be closed out by the next meeting.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jake Carmody with Vanessa Associates. We met at the waiver request, and yeah, we did receive peer review comments, and we're working towards responding to those this week so that we could be ready. Ideally, we have, we respond to them and then get concurrence from the peer reviewer before the next meeting. I can, if you'd like, or if there's any need for formality, I can walk through and explain the project or provide an update if that would be helpful.
If you could just wa- walk through it, and then we can ask questions. Because it is a new public hearing, it's technically its own process, and some people may have not watched the prior one and may be watching it now. And so both for the record and for education of ourselves and the public, I would ask you just walk through the project and answer questions that we might have or if any members of the public have questions.
Okay, so the project is, is this shown on the screen that's being viewed, like, is this a recording of the project?
Yes.
Okay. So the project is the shaded yellow area in the center of this graphic. Context, we've got Route 133, Great Road, running left to right on the plan. And Route 125 down to 120, uh, 133, north-south, Sutton Street is over here. There have been various other improvement projects along the corridor, and there's a gap in pedestrian, in the pedestrian network, specifically at this intersection today. And working with the town, we secured a MassWorks grant to pay for intersection improvements that would include constructing crosswalks and sidewalks within the project limits and close that pedestrian network gap. All of those yellow circles on this graphic show the various walking destinations in this area, including multi-family residential, commercial, retail spaces, as well as recreational spaces, all in this area. And when the sidewalk gap is, is closed, it will, it would be a continuous, a long continuous network of sidewalks that we would connect. So by building a short amount of sidewalk, for example, maybe there's about 500 feet or less sidewalk on 125, you'd be able to walk from points at, say Barker Street, all the way down to the park on Sutton Street without having to step into the street, I mean, other than crosswalks. We're also including a sidewalk connection to the boat launch area on Great Pond Road from the intersection. I'll pull up a different, oops, there we go. Looking at the construction plans, this is, this plan's turned a little bit. Let me zoom in a little so that you can see it. This is Great Pond Road coming from over here. Butcher Boy is on this quadrant here. And this is the Casablanca driveway, and then you've got 125 right here. In addition to building the sidewalk and crosswalk improvements, we took this as an opportunity to fix some of the geometric improvements at the intersection as they relate to pedestrian safety and intersection safety. The, the main thing being the, this long right turn s- free, there's a, today is like this free right turn movement you can make from 125 onto 133. You could, I think I, I think I've gotten up to 40 miles an hour on it. Half joking, but when, if we're trying to create a pedestrian connection across this intersection, having that fast turning movement where you can't really, you don't see the road, the road where people would be crossing is not in front of you before you make that turn. We realigned that right turn movement, brought it closer to the intersection and have the crossing. Four pedestrians would be signalized, and the alignment of that approach to the crosswalk would be, put the pedestrians into better view. So we are, we're doing that on that corner, that's a big geometric change.
Exactly what the crossing be?
It's right here. So this is the existing right turn slip lane is down here. That pavement will be removed and turned into grass. And the new right turn slip lane is here, and the crossway, crossing would be right here.
So is this all in the public right of way, or is this?
Yes, yeah. This, this is actually, so the Mass DOT right of way is, the line is here, so the whole intersection is DOT right of way. And heading down towards Great Pond, that turns into the town right of way. But it's all inside of the public right of way. Long explanation about the traffic improvements. With the projects where we are modifying the curb location, we're addressing stormwater. Where all the catch basins that are proposed have deep sump catch basins. And we are, where we have the opportunity to, taking the catch basins off, out of the line of, of stormwater flow so that the catch basin is at the end of the line, and there's a manhole, so it's not catch basin to catch basin connections.
For the right turn lane?
Oh, sorry.
Said it's a signalized intersection for the pedestrians?
Yes.
So, but it's not a, just a regular, not a traffic light?
It would have, that right turn will have it, will be brought into the traffic signal. A, a lot of it will be a, a green, it will be mostly on green or flashing yellow right turn movement. So you would have, it's not going to have a dramatic change in traffic operations.
Okay, so it's pretty much green or yellow unless someone's hitting the signal to cross, then it goes to red.
So would that be like that right turn by China Blossom?
Yes.
Which never used to have a signal?
Yes.
But now it's got a green arrow, but it also has a red stop.
Yes.
So this will not have a red?
This will be very, this will operate almost identical to that right turn movement. And the reason is the Architectural Access Board made it, they ruled like 10 years ago that-
The, the what?
The Massachusetts Architectural Access Board ruled about 10 years ago that any crosswalk at a, a signalized intersection needs to have a signalized pedestrian crossing. So even though it's a right turn slip movement that wasn't otherwise under signal control, when we're rebuilding intersections, we bring them under signalized control. But in this case, are, the whole objective of the project is to improve pedestrian access through this area. So it's natural to try to get it all signalized.
No, I mean, that makes sense, I just want, if it was, I don't think it would work very well if it was an actual, like, green, yellow, red, all the time, switching off, just because that would back things up, I think tremendously. Or it's really just stopping for pedestrians, I think that's, that makes sense.
Some of the other improvements, if I jump over to the next page. So we have a proposed sidewalk opposite the Butcher Boy, across the street from Butcher Boy. Today, if you were to look at it, you would think there wasn't space for a sidewalk. What we're doing is reallocating some of the existing pavement width, and, and that creates space so that most of that sidewalk is actually on the street side of the existing guard rail. So we're not impacting the, the wetlands outside, that are behind the guard rail. There's a rain garden in the, proposed in the grass area in front of Butcher Boy. Most of that grass area is in the Mass DOT right of way. So we proposed a rain garden with the space that we had available between existing utilities that are under that grass area. And so we were able to convey some of the stormwater into that rain garden before it's discharged into the wetlands that are across the street from Butcher Boy. So that was reviewed and commented on by the peer reviewer. And if I jump over to, let me zoom out a little bit. This is a plan of Great Pond Road. The 120, the intersection we're looking at is up over here to the left, come along Great Pond Road, and then split, the screen split, and the boat launch area is right over here, down here. So the sidewalk will run along the reservoir side of Great Pond Road between the intersection and the boat launch area. Again, you would think, I mean, it's clear there's no room to actually put a sidewalk from the existing edge of the road towards the reservoir today. So what we have, what we proposed was widening on the opposite side of the street from the reservoir over here, adding some pavement over here so that we could shift the double yellow line slightly away from the reservoir, shift, shift the edge of the road away from the reservoir. And the space for the sidewalk, it really exists in the space that is between the existing guard rail and into the street. So that we're, again, not moving that guard rail into the slope and into the reservoir. So that, that's how we accommodated the sidewalk and limited impacts to the resource area. Again, catch basins that were impacted here all got deep sump catch basins. And again, it was reviewed by the peer reviewer, and we were incorporating, responding to questions and comments. Specifically, one of the questions was the, looking at the condition of outfalls from the stormwater. And we've looked at those and have pictures, and there's, there are no existing erosion issues or issues where the outfalls are falling apart. So that's something that we've looked at already. In terms of construction schedule, we're trying to, we're going through a Mass DOT permit that's just about ready to be issued once we've resolved our environmental permits. So we've got Concom and the watershed special permit.
So is the, um, the supervision, if you will, or ownership of the project, is it the town or the state?
It's the town. Yes, the town got, secured the MassWorks funding for the project. DPW is supplementing some of those costs, I believe with Chapter 90 funding. So it's, the town is, is the project proponent, and then Mass DOT's involvement is because part of the work, or the, the intersection work in the work on 125, Mass DOT owns that. So we need a Mass DOT access permit to perform the work, like permission from DOT to go and, and do the improvements. So they, they review it, make sure that they're happy with what they're going to own at the end of the day.
Got it, okay.
So I mean, at least that guarantees that they've looked at it and it doesn't interfere with plans that they have.
I was just curious of who ended up manages the thing on a day-to-day basis. Because didn't this stuff further down the road, uh, was, was that done by the state or was administered by the town? Where the farm was for jetties?
Up, let me jump, jump over here. This project over here?
Yeah, yeah.
This project, so it was advanced initially as a private development project, and then they got a, the town got a, and a lot of times, most times, MassWorks grants are partnerships between a town and a private development to say, hey, if the state gives the town money to build something, it will help the private development be able to move forward, like, be, be realized. In this case, there was a partnership between the town and the development on a MassWorks grant. The money goes to the town, so technically, it was a town project to do that intersection improvement.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Sure.
The, and again, disclosure, I, I'm one of the abutters for this project. But how much do you look at existing traffic patterns and existing pedestrian patterns in designing this?
A lot. So we, in terms of traffic and vehicle, um, vehicle traffic and impacts, we take traffic counts and perform the trap, prepare a traffic report that gets, like, like was asked, Mass DOT, like, that's it to the nth degree, and looks at every calculation in it. Because we, what we did is we, we figured out what the traffic operations are today, and then what they will be in 2025 if we implement the project, and what they'll be in seven years if we implement the project. So we're able to, to show that, like, that we're not creating any, any negative impact with the project. In terms of pedestrian, we do, we do count pedestrians when we count the vehicle traffic. But it's a, with bike and pedestrian network improvements, it's like a chicken or the egg kind of argument. So saying like, well, there's no pedestrians, so why do you need a sidewalk is a really cruddy argument. It's kind of like, well, there's no cars where 93 is before it was built.
So, and follow-up, Mr. Chair. So yeah, one of, one of the things I'll remark on is there is just a lot of traffic day in, day out on this street, including a lot of large trucks. Whether they're supposed to be there or not, they are there.
Yes.
In terms of adding more pedestrian and potentially even more pedestrian crossings, it's just something I'm sure you're taking into account, it has been taken into account, yeah.
Yes. So we have, we run truck, we model truck movements through the intersection and so that all the turns can accommodate the largest tractor-trailer trucks. And then that's why we have the pedestrian signal equipment at the crosswalks. I mean, we know that there's people out here, that we know there's destinations. So we'd rather give them a space and as much safety improvements as we can to get them through and around the intersection. Whereas if they didn't have any of that, it'd be, they'd be much worse off.
And we have approved a daycare facility on, where number nine is there, the, and you may know that, but, so traffic is going to increase from, beyond what it is now.
Yes, yeah. And that project would have looked at traffic impacts, I believe, as part of that project.
It did.
So here's a question. If you're coming south on 125 and you want to take that left onto Great Pond Road, that's a brutal turn, and there's no left. Are you adding a lane there?
No, we're not, we're, we're, um, let me see here, I have. I'm gonna pull up the pavement marking plans if I have them with me, which I should. Yeah, so this is the signal equipment plan, it's a little busy, find something. It breaks off, but it's the, we're not changing it, this is the pavement marking plan so that that movement is this lane right here, turning left. It is not a great movement, we're not at, we're not adding that lane as part of the project, we're not adding it.
Or are you at least giving a chance to take a left, like, change the signalization so that there's a period of time that you can take a left there? I, that's a really, that's one of the most dangerous intersections in town. Because the problem is, it's two lanes of traffic coming at a fairly high speed, and somebody's taking a left, and there's no ability where you're unimpeded, you have to wait to know which they are.
Let me see what we're doing. We do have a phase, yeah, we do have a phase that can, um, that would allow that lane, that approach to go by itself.
Is that a delayed signal or an arrow?
This would be, it goes in it before the southbound, so it comes up first. The 125 comes up first, so if there's somebody that's turning left, they would have a chance to go before, otherwise. Oh, actually, and it's dark, hold on, so one and six.
It has to be an arrow, though, because otherwise you wouldn't know that the other lane doesn't-
Yeah, it's a, it's an arrow.
I mean, if they could add an arrow there with like eight seconds, whatever, before the other-
Yeah.
Before the northbound goes, that would be awesome.
It would be one of these heads, this head right here.
Yeah.
So it would have an arrow, so you'd have a, you would have a solid green when you have no opposing cars coming at you. And then that solid green goes, the green arrow goes away, and you would just have a green ball if the other approach was coming up at the same time.
That would be great.
So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, if you do that, I think that's, that's fine.
I would just, one thing I just want to point out is that it, you know, it's part of other projects, as well as part of our master plan. One of the interconnectivity of sidewalks was something that was mentioned a lot when we did the senior center and the, and the housing project there, added sidewalks going up towards McAvoy. This does go a long way towards the master plan of adding sidewalk connectivity, you know, especially like, we got great, we got the-
The senior center over here?
Well, no, now, yes, we did that, but, so that goes down this way now. If we can get connectivity, and then we get to the businesses, Salon and Mad Maggie's, and then over to the boat launch. I mean, those are all things that kind of can be connected. It would be nice if you could go for a kayak and then walk and get ice cream rather than taking your car, going through and coming back and stuff like that, just, or just be able to walk through that area. Might make it more used, which is what we want, so.
Yeah, it's a little hard to see on the screen, but so the red, it's easy on my, I can see it. But like, there's a red line here that shows the sidewalk that was recently constructed, and then the orange is the sidewalk that's proposed with this project. But yeah, definitely taking it, uh, trying to take the reliance off of cars.
Okay, great.
So yeah, we're, we're aiming to get the responses to the peer review comments in this week, and then hopeful that we can get a, some closure from the peer reviewer on those responses before the next meeting. So if, I mean, we would, we expect, we didn't expect to get approval tonight while that peer review is ongoing, process is ongoing. And what I'd request is that we could continue to the next meeting.
Yeah, the next meeting's July 1st, assuming that stormwater gets closed out, then I could prepare a decision for your consideration at that meeting.
Jean, have there been any comments that you've received?
Early on, we had a comment from John Strauss. We got in the plans, we shared the plans with them, his comments, as far as I can tell, have been addressed, and he hasn't reached out again.
Great. And nothing specific for this public hearing?
Nothing for this public hearing.
Is there any members of the public? I don't see anyone here, so we'll say that's a no. Chris, any questions or comments?
Nah, not on my end, no.
Okay, great, we'll continue until July 1st. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, discussion item, starter home district 40Y.
Yeah, um, so this, you may recall, we did the update to the housing production plan recently, and one of the strategies included in that plan was to kind of research and investigate a starter home district. It's National Law 40Y, thank you. And coincidentally, very soon after having that approved, Member Valley Planning Commission is applying for grant funding to work regionally to try to identify potential areas in town, and then possibly draft zoning language. Not necessarily for next year's town meeting, the grant would run through July of next year, but just start the conversation about potential areas. John, I know we've talked about, we did this once, it was-
Oh, we did it twice.
Well, the Meadowwood, Peterson, Buckland.
And the other one further down on 114, the house is going for over a million, so, you know, it's-
Yep.
The value of land is so high that it's very difficult to have low price play.
Yeah, I mean, the law tries to, it allows density, so if I remember correctly, it's four units per acre, but it limits the size of the house to 1,850 square feet, I believe. So there's, there's dimensional criteria that would have to be met, and then-
But I mean, Meadowwood, I think was more than four, four acre.
They're 5,000 square foot lots. I, I, I don't know how many acres it is, but it had four phases. I mean, it was Meadowwood, Peterson, Buckland, and one other one in there. And 5,000 square foot lots, but the houses, you know, like you said, in recent years, they're going for eight, nine million dollars. And it's, it's a neat little neighborhood, I will say.
Oh, it is a neat little, and, and I mean, it, it is interesting, some of the, you know, more interesting ones, uh, or that, and, you know, and Ben Osgood's project a little bit further down on 114, I forget what that street's called.
Mayflower.
Yeah, I mean, that's actually a very interesting one. It's, they're actually quite nice, I think that turned out pretty nice, I remember.
And that's a condo homeowners association development.
Yeah.
But those houses are much larger than we're talking.
No, they are, they are, but I think the, like Palomino Drive, I think that was four per acre, I think it was four or six per acre, so.
That's a PRD, but I don't know how many per acre.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's four, so, but, you know, the problem is, it's like, four per acre and limiting size to 1,800 square foot is a non-starter, because land's too expensive.
It's the same as downtown, the minimum zoning is 12,500 square feet. So it's essentially about a 12,000 square foot lot.
Yeah.
And, and it's, and it's all developed too, right? So we're, most likely would be an overlay over some area that we see potential for redevelopment.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, you would have to, I mean, could it be somewhere where you have slightly larger homes now and put, instead of one home, make it into four homes?
Yeah, except that that did not go over well with anybody that lives in those neighborhoods.
Right, right. It, it's a stretch to think in R1, which has two acre minimums, that we're going to do an overlay and allow people to, to cut it, cut it for.
When we had the two-family houses in R4, and you remember, there were a couple people, the developers came in, found a lot and built like five, 6,000 square feet split among two houses, that was totally disproportionate to the neighborhood. And we changed the zoning to make it not by right, because people were crazy about it. So it's, just not anything you do.
Yeah, everybody's in favor of right-sized housing, they're calling it, or starter home housing, but it's, how do you fit in?
I mean, like it or not, I don't think there's any land where you could build lots of single-family houses on small lots, there just weren't any parcels left, period. And then it forces you to do multi-family, which, like it or not, is, is going to continue to be the future. I mean, this 40P is a good example, I, it, it's just the way it's going to go.
Yep.
Yeah. Also, but it, right, but isn't that the question then, like, are we able to find, even if there's small areas where we could encourage? You can't force it, but are there places where we can encourage it where it might fit? I think that's the question.
But Jean's point, R4 is already 12,500, that's four per acre. I mean, we sort of already have a zone that does that.
Yeah, but it's already developed, right? So we have to find like a green field, like plot a land somewhere in town, right, and do a little, right, from it make-
Right, but then you run into the problem of that, first of all, how many of them are there left besides a couple of the farms? And, which is, you know, kind of a can of worms itself. But if we're like six, eight acres and close to like, in an R1 district, people go berserk. I mean, like it or not, it's, everything else is going large lots, why all of a sudden does somebody get it?
But we know-
They're building small lots.
I'm not saying they'd have any interest in this, but we know that Brooks has a 33-acre parcel that they entertain conversations with Edgewood. Now, if that 33, it's undeveloped, if they had interest in an overlay for starter homes? I mean, what would be the objection there? That's, they'd get more than the density would allow under the traditional zoning, and obviously-
Yeah, they would, but I mean, I, I, I think if that property's ever developed, it's going to be developed. Probably like an Edgewood, there's, there's no way Brooks would, uh, ever-
I, again, I've said it's a stretch, I'm not saying they have any interest in this, but I'm just saying if we had a posse of land like that, that isn't-
I mean, that's a good example, because that's one of the largest parcels that is sort of close to roads, doesn't require an enormous amount of development, I mean.
I could also see maybe some of the places on 125 that are commercial now, but maybe it would make sense if you, you know- but maybe it would make sense if you, you know, you could change that.
You always just struggle with the tax base. At 125, do we want commercial?
Yeah, I mean, arguably, I think there's more likelihood that you could do that on 114 than 125. Just still if you want the parcels.
Eagle Tribune lot that's out there, that, you know, who knows the future of papers, so.
Is that 10 acres over there?
I, I want to say between 10 and 15, so. But it would just be conversation. This isn't locking anybody into zoning or going to town meeting at this point. It's just start the conversation, investigate kind of regionally what people are thinking as well as identify places in town.
I just don't know how it makes like, I don't know, like I just don't know how like a developer does the math on like, in this town for 1,800 square feet, I mean, it just, to me, it just doesn't make any sense. The math doesn't even make any sense to develop it. Like they would go after something, something else. Unless there's like an, like an excellent incentive.
Think I have a few single-family homes built here tonight. They're vanishingly small, right? If we had 10 housing starts in a year, I'd be surprised.
I didn't understand what you said.
No, the number of single-family housing starts these days, it's got to be vanishingly small. Single-family houses being built, new single-family houses.
In North Andover, yeah, yeah, it's decreased tremendously since the 80s.
And the problem ends up being is like, you know, we, we saw it on that one where the guy came in. It's, the problem is, he's got to build a big house on that property to cover the length. So I mean, and that's what you're going to get, yeah.
Right, but if you're down to 10,000 square foot lots, then that changes that dynamic a little bit. You're getting more density than what would have been afforded.
I think like right now, like a single-family R1 is probably around 400 grand a lot.
Oh, yeah.
So again, I just don't know how you can get the math to work even. But there would have to be some sort of significant vest, like incentive, right?
So under the starter, we, we would at a minimum have to allow four per acre. That's eight houses on an R1 lot. That's how the math works. R1 is two acre zoning, so you'd be getting essentially eight, and that's how-
Yeah, but I guess like, I'm not sure what the, what is the state defining as a starter home? Like aside from like, I mean, like 1,800 square feet, but like from a price point perspective, like on what they would, someone that's-
Yeah, I don't think they'd get into the price of the lot, but it, it's linked in your, in the packet. It's, it's Chapter 40Y. It's very short, it's an easy read. There's not a tremendous amount of parameters. They do allow for accessory dwelling units on these units. I think up to 600 square feet for those this time.
Mr. Chair, just a question. So Jean, you're just raising the question to us and offering the possibility of just considering-
Not really raising a question, I'm just informing you that we're going to participate in this, if, should they get funded the grant money, that we're going to participate with MVPC to kind of collaborate on potential locations.
I mean, I think Sean, to your point is like, and again, I'm not sure what the, maybe Chris can weigh in here, but what would be more valuable, building one 5,000 square foot home or building three 1,800 square foot homes? I assume that three 1,800 would, but would you get more for that? But I don't know. Chris, is there value there?
I don't know. I mean, I'm kind of with you guys. What you're, what you're kind of saying here is it seems like just quick and dirty math. It seems just like a big wash on the cost of the land, cost to build them. You're, I mean, you can just, you know, use 300 bucks a foot plus minus depending. And you can do your math that way, even if you have four houses on that lot. At 1,850, 100 square feet, you're at half a million plus minus. I think that math makes sense. And plus the cost of the lot, it's a wash. But I mean, I don't know if there's subsidies or whatever, but you know, it's obviously has good intent. I just don't know how it'll work.
Okay, so all it can study, I mean, I think one part of the study would be, has anyone done these? And if so, have they worked? I think that's a good question. It does look from the law that the town can get some funding by setting one of these up. But I would be curious if, if it's worked anywhere. Okay, well, we'll let's, we'll look at it and if it winds up working, wonderful. If it winds up that it's not going to work, then we don't adopt it. No harm in studying it. All right, can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 6th and May 13th?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Yes.
Sean?
I pass on the 6th and vote yea on the 13th.
Okay, I say yes. Peter?
Aye.
Those are approved. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor. Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Yes.
John?
Great.
Yep, Peter?
Aye.
Okay, we adjourn. Good meeting everyone, July 1st.